If I need a translator, are you going to charge me $150? Thank you.
Thank you. If you want to briefly give a little...
Speech.
Translation?
Yeah.
Well, he listed the responsibilities and duties of the city council. About 10 points that he mentioned, and then... The purpose of that is to question the responsibilities of the city council regarding the Veteran Park, I think he means by, right?
Yes, sir.
Veteran Park, he said there's a lot of trash there. People are... Some people are drinking alcohol there. They reported that to the police department, and no action has been taken so far. So he's questioning that we, you know, implement, you know, rules to keep things in order in the Veteran Park. And he talked about the translation, why the court is charging $150 to bring someone to translate. And he's questioning about the website of the city. Why don't they post another language other than English? And he wants an answer to, you know, the problem. Some meetings and sessions to discuss the party meters before it would be public, and until now, nothing has happened. So I think this message has been sent to everybody, and the answer will be... It may require a meeting to talk about why these things... I don't think we can address everything now, but it's common sense. The Veteran Park should be clean. Any violations, any trash should be, you know, anybody should be punished and penalized for that. That's no excuse. Bringing alcohol there while there are kids and families, I think it's not appropriate and should be taken care of by the police. I think all these points, I'm sure the city manager will take them into consideration and discuss them with the responsible parties. Thank you.
Richard Poselwitz, 3 minutes, sir.
Hello. I was living in Hamtramck on Conlon Street. And about two weeks ago, some, probably... Somebody who working for a public service make the pictures later on. Some guys from Public Works called to me that I supposed to get cleaned up, clean out my piece of the street. I asked her, "But you provide a bad service one year or two years ago every other week." And I was... She explained to me that the machine is broken, and I must do this one. Later on, I was a Google, so I'm the VOD, City Order 911. It doesn't mention at all if you Google "who's supposed to be cleaning a street", that is a pointing street. It's a city obligation. But I asked her for a time. I asked my son to help me out. I was a cleaning guy. I have about 10 pictures. All better than my neighbors get shitty on a street. Even if I was a cleaning, that the wind is blowing from right to left. My barber got a letter about your, you know, the debris. It was a came. We showing to Antonio, it's a building inspector's. Even at front of your building is a plenty of debris on a parking. So my suggestion is you're supposed to be a pastor, you know, on the law. Make it your own side, all over, put a garbage can. If you're littering, you know, on the street sidewalk, wherever you name it. That's supposed to be a fine couple hundred bucks. Or community service, or both. So the police gonna issue a ticket. Not so long, I call it, and I see you're on the... Some woman eating something from a near restaurants, have a doggy bag, walking with a street and throwing food under my feet. If I was, you know, on the complaint, she give me a middle finger. And dirty word, so I'm the... I am not a garbage man, you know, to clean up after some nasty people. Across my street, it's a hookah. They get, you know, some tobacco, pipe, oranges. They smoke, they smoke, that's fine. But forever they left over, they throwing on a sidewalk. Thank you, but you're supposed to be issuing tickets to your, you know, the realty people, not to some homeowner.
Thank you. Abraham Ashaheim?
Oh, you dropping stuff, shit?
He doesn't need it. Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager, City Clerk, City Attorney-in-Chief. Just wanted to say, I have some questions and I want to talk about some things. Why has the city manager done to address residency? What has the city manager done to address residency? Is there any favoritism? Is he getting anything to keep silent? Why is there a new policy on residency, which I heard from Lansing? They wanted to know why it's not being enforced on now, on these city council members? Why only all the new, the ones that's coming and that's running for office? Why now? Three, Mayor Ghalib should also give the community a say on whom he thinks is qualified to be the next mayor. Why all the parties towards Chief Taheri? There are members here, and they know who they are. One member specifically here tried to prevent him from first being the chief, and then tried to disturb or disrupt his programs and push negative information out there. When he does an amazing job, that same person wants to be the first in the picture. Why is a certain councilman trying to take credit for all the good work other people are doing? Like the mayor, the other council members, the city manager, the DPW, director, and all the staff in this beautiful city hall of Hamtramck? It's unethical and wrong to take credit for everyone else's hard work. Thank you. And you guys have fun in Washington. I know the president's doing an event, and hopefully you guys get invited. I don't know if the mayor can take everyone with him, but like I said, three council meetings ago, if you guys need money, I'm willing to get a bus and take you there.
Thank you, Abraham. Ted Barham?
Aggressive. Honorable mayor, honorable council members. I would like to... I have two things to talk about. The first thing is that Hamtramck is the first city in America. Obviously, this is going for years now where the Islamic Cult of Prayer was made official. And I'm not complaining about that. I know people do. What I would like to ask about that is something that actually had been starting in Dearborn, and I would love for that to happen here in Hamtramck as well, which is a Christian Cult of Prayer to go out. It's actually something that we Christians are told to do to... Well, there's a verse that talks about how we should shout our message from the rooftops, which is what we want to do. We want to tell the whole world, not just Christians. We want to tell the whole world that the Jewish Messiah, Jesus, is the Savior of the world for everyone who believes because of his death on the cross. So as Christians, we believe that's a message for the whole world, and we would like to be able to have a Christian Cult of Prayer to broadcast that out. So I have talked with residents here in Hamtramck, and our people who would be on board with that would like to be involved in doing something like that. So in brief, what I'm saying is, does the Islamic Cult of Prayer? Fine. I would like to suggest could we have a Christian Cult of Prayer? I would not be allowed to suggest this in a lot of Muslim countries, but this is America. So I just want to show that... I want to demonstrate that we can have the same freedoms here, Christians, that the Muslim majority does in Hamtramck. So that's the first thing. And the second thing is, I'd like to expand this. Congratulations to the mayor for how I heard that I've been appointed ambassador to Kuwait. And I would like to ask for the same rights for Christians in Muslim countries that Muslim people have here in America. I think it's good that people can come to America and become American citizens and even get into powerful positions. But that is not the case in many Muslim countries. In fact, almost all of them. I've lived in some Muslim countries myself, and I'll give you an example. So in Kuwait, where the honorable mayor is going to be ambassador, non-Muslims are not allowed to become citizens. And, you know, I would like a lot more rights than that. You know, I'd like the same rights that Muslim people have here in America. So, you know, I'm not just asking for Christians to be allowed to become citizens, but to have the same power over there that Muslims have here. Before this, I thought it was the time to ask for this.
Thank you, Ted.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Hassan On. 3 minutes, sir.
Good afternoon. I just wanted to address the gentleman's thing about Dearborn. First of all, when I went to Dearborn before, they did not want anybody to pass Bibles around. And I'm the one that advocated for them to pass Bibles. I don't think Hamtramck will sit there and tell you guys you can't pass Bibles. This is... Hamtramck is open to everything. So I just wanted to tell that, first of all. So I got a subject over here where I heard in a paper that two gentlemen were charged. Brother Hassan was charged with a crime. It's called, "When you sit there and go ask people to vote for you, and you sit there and you put the ballot inside, and there's video, there's everything, and you criticize two gentlemen the other day, and you told them to come outside, and you wanted to fight them." Do you know there is a crime when you... That's a threat when you say something to somebody like that? Unless you want to go in the ring, and we can sign a consent, me and you, and we can do it for charity and see who wins at the end. And a lot of people would love me and brother Mohammed to go in the ring for free. And we'll sign a consent for it. It's not a big deal. You don't have to be threatening nobody. If you feel that you are ready for a boxing match, and we can do it for charity, you know, I'll be more than happy. But you know you've been charged with a crime. And when the GA's office is not investigating this crime, that tells us that you sat there and you made sure to go talk to the GA's office, talk to everybody that you will support, okay? To support the president before Kamala, your baby, like they say. Brother Mohammed, let me ask you something. If you get charged, you know that you have to automatically sit there and leave city council. Just do us all a favor. I got a resolution that I want to sit there and introduce today. The resolution says that brother Mohammed and Ascoli, they have to sit there and resign from city council. But they want to sit there and not resign. 2025, there's election year. People are entitled... I need an extra minute. Can I have an extra minute?
Go ahead and look at me when you speak, please.
Oh, yeah, just, you know, you gotta look at brother Mohammed. You know, he's... He likes to sit there and intimidate people. Yeah, I'm right here, you got the gentleman. Why don't you yell at me, man? Huh? Oh, you're a tough guy, huh? Oh, brother Mohammed doesn't like the criticism. See, that's the problem here, that the criticism, that criticism, every single one of you. Does anybody want to adopt this resolution? Yes, no? So if you guys don't adopt this resolution, that means you guys agree that it's okay to tamper with absentee ballots. So I just ask you, if you wanted to adopt it, we can adopt it and vote on it. Does anybody want to adopt it? Wow. Brother Mohammed, I think everybody love you, don't they? They're waiting for the pending charges to come through. But the resolution says 2025, make Hamtramck great again. Did you see the resolution, brother Mohammed? Oh, you're gonna be in the paper tomorrow just to let you know. Oh my God, brother Mohammed, I'm just gonna give you the resolution and walk away. Make sure you put this in the, what's it called? Put it in the record, please. There's your resolution. Put it in the record.
Thank you, Hassan.
No problem.
Resolve Chowdhury.
Good afternoon, honorable counsel. I'm here to address an issue I've been addressing since 2012. I purchased a house... Okay, I can give you some papers so you can see what I'm trying to talk... Mail, so it will be easy for understand. So I bought a property on 297th and Trouby Street in 2012. Since I purchased it, there's a back end lot next to my house. And in front of that lot is the walkway is broken. So there's actually no walkway, no concrete, no slab. The water, just grass and mud. So when it rains, the water is there. This water is going inside my house and in front of my house, and damaging my, you know, walkway too. So I came almost every year to the code enforcement and building department and show them this. Nothing happens. In 2019, if you go... If you go to Exhibit B, I marked Exhibit B, B2, you'll see they issued a barber warning to the owner. Just barber warning, because in front of his property, the walkway was broken, and it's not working. And after that, there's nothing, no record found. If you see Exhibit B3, no status available. So my question is, I've been giving this to the notice of CD for 13 years. Nothing happened. And if you see Exhibit A, number one, they issued me a warning to fix my garter's corner, little bit slided from the fascia board. The inspector has to have a binocular to find it. But this, when he was taking the picture, he was standing on that big hole, and he didn't notice it. He didn't think it is, you know, a safety issue. But my garter, the leadest life garter is a safety issue. I don't mind. It's a good thing for me. I'll fix it. But you guys have to take care of it, because I see a lot of women with stroller and handicap chair that can't go through. They have to move the side and go to the other side. It is not acceptable. It isn't Hamtramck. You see the audience? See the how the walkway is? It's in 2967 Trouby Street. And it's... I see it, my knowledge is it since 2012. So I hope... I don't want to go to the building department anymore with this issue, and I hope I will not have to come back again with this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Riza.
Did he give a comment to the thing around here?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Bill Meyer?
Yeah, that's true. And you did the brass, we talked about this one. Okay. You just tell me, that's what I want.
Hello. If I speak Arabic, will you translate for me? I don't know Arabic, but I wish I did. So thank you so much for your calmness and sanity and the way you can handle the comments. I appreciate that. And I want to thank you once again for the EDS resolution that you all passed unanimously, not just the mayor, everybody here passed it. And it was a very important bill that supports Palestinian people who are being slaughtered right now. And I know these people are all sensitive to that, and I appreciate that. You should know that our mayor is being attacked again, as usual, by the ADL this time, and they're trying to get Trump to reneg on the appointment to Kuwait. And I respect and thank the mayor for standing up for his principles, for his right to defend people who are under occupation. To being against Israel is not... And to be against Zionism is not to be anti-Semitic. We all know that, but you can't make me change my mind. I know antisemitism is hatred of Jewish people. And we don't hate Jewish people, because there's many good Jewish people. It's the Jewish people who support Zionism and the Israeli government that's oppressing the kind of people creating on by genocide are the ones we have to be concerned about. So don't be afraid of being accused of being antisemitism. You're not antisemitic by defending the Palestinians or opposing Israeli government. That's not it at all. So I just want to say that I hope that, if the mayor... I'm sort of hoping that, well, we'll find out if your friend Trump will follow the ADL or follow the common sense. But if he does, I'm glad, because I'd like to keep you here a lot longer if we can. So either way, we hate to leave you go, and I hope that whoever replaces you learns a lot from you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Mr. Mayor, that's all for public comments.
I think the gentleman left.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I apologize.
You have the email.
Yes, I have an email for the comment. Unfortunately, Ahmed Shadaf did leave me an email as well, but since he took up his time in public reading his comment, I'm not going to read his email, although it was a different topic. Maybe he'll come back for the second half and discuss that. But I do have a comment from Charles Blackwell. It says, "Hello, good evening. Councilman Mo Hassan should be promptly arrested for election fraud. A jury of 12 members of the community should decide if he is innocent or guilty." Mr. Mayor, that's all for public comment.
I was just gonna say, the gentleman who was talking about the call to prayer for Christians, that is allowed. It's part of the ordinance that is allowed. Usually churches do church bells, so that's what they do. But his version is allowed.
Thank you.
Also, you know, too. Yeah, they do all the time.
Yes.
They always bring you always.
Yeah, it's part of the same ordinance.
Yeah, it doesn't discriminate between, it says call to prayer, church bells. It's wide open for religious practice, so.
Also with that, we move to the consent agenda. This is approved with a single motion, no discussion. We have the first item, approval of minutes from the March 11, 2025 regular city council meeting. B, approval of invoice register date ending March 25, 2025. C, approval of pre-approved expenditure date ending March 25, 2025. D, resolution 2025-31, approving corrective action plan for Fund 265 Drug Law Enforcement Act 265 State. E, resolution 2025-32, approving FY 2024-25, third quarter budget adjustment.
Motion, second.
Hold on a favor.
Aye.
No objections?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we move to the public hearing, and we have resolution 2025-25B, approving public hearing and second reading of City Hamtramck Election Ordinance Tax Amendment to Chapter 35.
Motion, second.
And that is to start the public hearing?
Yes.
6:45.
Do we have anyone who wants to speak?
Anyone speak? Mark, Abraham? I'm sorry?
Yeah, the councilman.
Yes. Did you want to speak for public comment?
No. Here I am.
You want to speak for public comment on the precinct changes?
The precinct?
It's for the hearing. It's a public hearing for...
I want to speak every five minutes, if you can give the mic.
Nope. Mr. Mayor, we do not have a public comment on some of this agenda, yes?
Can you tell me what it is, for example?
Sure, I will explain to you. We have seven precincts in the city, and we are down to five precincts because the law changed that we, instead of having a limit of 32,999 voters per precinct, we are now allowed to have 4,999 voters per precinct because of the multiple versions and ways that we are allowed to vote now. There's 80 ballots, there's early voting, so many other options.
I want to speak about 10.
It's fun.
12 minutes first.
2 minutes, sir.
Which two are you taking off?
Oh, yeah.
Which two are you taking off?
They're gonna... Okay, so before you even speak, I'm sorry. So let me go, let me discuss this a little, since there's newer viewers. So it's not really, we're not removing, really... Okay, so you know how there's one precinct in the housing?
Yes.
And then there's two, there's three precincts in the community center, and there's three precincts at the senior plaza. So instead of having three precincts in three precincts, we're gonna split them down the middle and have two precincts at each location. So you'll still be voting in the same location, but you'll probably... Location, but you'll have a different precinct number. What we said, once, hopefully this is approved tonight, we'll prep the voter IDs, mail them out, put it in the newspaper, notify all residents, and like I said, it would be an easy change, because you'll still be voting in the same location.
So this is a state law, or it's in the charter, or what is it?
This is an ordinance. So in our charter, it says that precinct descriptions are ordinance-run, so they have to vote on them through the ordinance. So the resolution's brought on, the public hearing is heard, and they vote on an ordinance change.
What's the reason you got to change?
Is this part of, "Let me start your minutes"?
Yeah, go ahead, it's part of my minutes. You can ask me, 2 minutes, we can...
No, it's actually a public hearing. You can speak as long as you want in the public hearing.
Okay, I know, I can. So I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. First of all, why the change?
It saves us a lot of money and it's efficient.
It's efficient? I understand, but I'm just asking a couple of questions. It's efficient. Why would it be efficient?
Less money.
So why you do it?
And easier for the community.
Yeah, but why would you do it on an election year? I don't understand.
It's not a federal or state election. We have to choose a year. So one of the years, instead of it being a presidential year, we chose it to be a smaller election, which is a local election. We could have done it last year, but it would have been a horrible time to do it with a presidential election.
Is there anything you can do with the absentees? Where you can sit there and just come to the city, and a camera will be on there?
There is.
It's only in the city, right? Not all around the areas?
Instead of it being give and take, because it's gonna be, I know it's gonna be like an interview process.
It's not an interview.
No, no, I know, but it's a public comment. I'm gonna let you speak your mind, and if I have anything to say after you've spoken, I'll speak.
I just want to answer that question.
No, go ahead, Hassan.
Okay, I got you.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to ask, because of the situation regarding absentees, that situation over there, that we have to address this situation so people won't think that other people are saying they're an absentee, and they're coming and harvesting absentees, or whatever they're doing. It's a thing that I think that the city should consider, just absentees will be dropped off at the city, put in a box, and it would be nowhere else. Because Hamtramck is small. So that's all I'm asking. That's it.
To answer that, we don't make our own rules. They're set by state. And the state says you can drop off a ballot in a drop box, or in the mailbox, or deliver it, and we can't not allow it.
No, I was talking about drop...
I know, but we have to allow all versions of dropping off a ballot that the state allows. We can't limit it.
All right.
So that's all for public comment. Thank you, Hassan.
All right, no more comments, all right.
Mr. Chair, I motion to go.
All right.
6:40, yeah, second.
All right. So most, no more, any further discussion by the council?
6:40.
6:40.
Are we gonna vote? Any discussion? Councilman Muhees?
Yes.
Ah, Mahfud, I apologize. Councilman Asmiri?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Sidman?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Fai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2025-25B. Oh, Mr. Mayor, would you like to vote on this? It is an ordinance.
Yes.
Yes.
And it's yes.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Mayor, resolution 2025-25B approved.
Thank you. All right, we move to the new business, and we have the first resolution, 2025-33, approving the purchase of new battery-powered extrication equipment.
Motion, second.
Mr. Mayor, I have the fire chief to highlight this. Basically, it's something he planned for, budgeted for, and we need... Go ahead, please.
Good evening. What we did is, we're in need of new extrication equipment. The equipment we have was purchased in 2007. It is gas-powered. It's, when we use it, it's joined to the power unit by a 20-foot hydraulic post. With this... With this, new equipment we'll do is it's battery-powered, so we do no longer have to rely on battery-powered equipment. We're more mobile, and it's gonna be quieter, and it's also more powerful to deal with the, with our new cars, with the new vehicles. They're designed to protect us in a wreck, but they're harder to get into. So these have more power to allow us to get through the new steels. So what I'm asking for, I planned with the city controller to purchase, we need four or four separate tools in the package, to purchase two tools this year, two tools next budget year to spread out across, so there's not as big of a budget hit. We performed a side-by-side comparison with three different manufacturers. We had cars out, our guys assessed the tools, went through, and this is what, this, the brand that we chose was Hearst, through McQueen Fire Equipment. They came in with a, with a good solid performance, and it came in in our budget range. So what I'm asking for is just for you guys to approve the purchase of the first set of tools, then you guys will see me after July 1 to do the second set.
Any questions? No? Councilman Alsmiri?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2025-33 approved.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, the next one is resolution 2025-34, approving the final price for the new fire pumper.
Motion, second.
Mr. Mayor, again, I have the fire chief here. As you're aware, we're getting a new fire pumper, grant-funded, but we want to make sure all the bells and whistles are on, since we tend to keep these for decades to come. So, fire chief.
Yes, when we came, we had our initial proposal from our, in our fire equipment. It was based upon the specifications that we came up with. When you, when you go through this procedure, you go and you have a pre-built consultation meeting with the engineers, make sure everything is what we want and how it is gonna perform as we need it. Generally, these are some price adjustments here, so there's some give and take. We did add some features to the truck. We did change the body from aluminum to stainless steel. What this is, was gave us from a ten-year to a twenty-year warranty. We did add a couple of safety features, airbags inside the cab, which is something new for us. It's not a, it's, it wasn't common in fire trucks last time we did. Now it's more of a commonplace, so this gives us a safety feature in case of an accident. And then with that, we had to upgrade the powertrain a little bit to, to make up for the increased weight from stainless steel over deal of them. And those were a couple of changes, so we came in, and our final price is, right now, nine hundred and nine thousand and twenty-one dollars. And that's where we are right now. We're just asking you guys to approve the final pricing for the, for the pumper.
It's a nine hundred?
Nine hundred and nine thousand and, nine hundred and nine and twenty, nine hundred and nine thousand and twenty-one.
So that means the grant's for eight hundred thousand, right?
Correct.
So the city will pay a hundred and nine dollars almost, correct?
Yes.
Any questions?
How important it is to, but it is?
How important is it for the purchase? The average lifespan, or the recommended lifespan for a new pumper is fifteen years for NFPA. Our two frontline pumbers, one's in 2009, one's in 2010, so we're already at that fifteen year. And we're relying on a 1996 pumper as our backup, which is currently in service, in service right now because my, one of my engines is, is in for maintenance. We do have extensive repair bills that we've had over the last several years. These rigs are used a lot, and we do need to upgrade this, and, and, I mean, at the last budget, you guys heard me say, I would like to have a second pumper. And we started the process here because the minimum build time right now is twenty-six months. So we need to be planning in the future, we need to be ready to go.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Alsmiri?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, your resolution 2025-34 approved.
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next one is resolution 2025-35, approving award of the 2025 Trow Bridge sewer, water, and road replacement engineering design.
Motion, second.
Mr. Mayor, I have Phil Tiffany from Hennessy and John, our DPS director, here to speak on this. But the gist of it is, we've been having huge problems on Trow Bridge. Every time it floods ever so slight, or every time it rains ever so slightly, that block floods tremendously, like really badly. And some of you probably have seen it on Facebook, people post about it every time. It's basically because the design is poor and things are failing. So we heard it loud and clear, and as you know, we're trying to replace our infrastructure as rapidly as possible, and I'm pretty sure the whole block will be happy with this. But we don't want to just do minor fixes when we do. When we do, we want to address everything, including the water mains, the lead service lines, and repaving it with concrete and not basically asphalt. So it's gonna be a whole package deal, and we're starting the process with getting Hennessy going on it. So John, Tiffany, take the microphone.
So, evening, mayor, council. So DPS staff has been diligently televising sewers and finding where we do have issues. So one of the problems that, between DPS and some of Hennessy staff has gone out there and looked at this area, as you can see on the screen, there is a catch basin, the green line. That, the line going into that catch basin is inverted, so that's one issue that we saw. The other one that we found is, you can see the green line going through underneath a home, which raises concern, so we did televise that. I just received the video when I got here today, so I haven't been able to look at that, but I did talk to DPS staff. They said that no homes are connected to that. So our proposed solution right now is to cut and cap that sewer so we can get that filled and abandoned underneath a home, because that does cause some liability if that was to rupture. Put a new storm sewer, or new sewer down Trow Bridge with new catch basins when we repaved the road, when we designer repaved the road, and then like Max mentioned, putting in the new water main on the north side of the road underneath the sidewalk.
All right. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, where, how's it gonna be funded?
So this will come from the water and sewer fund.
Is there estimated of how much will?
A hundred and twenty thousand, right?
So our engineering services will be a hundred and twenty thousand. The overall project, we're estimating about two million, because it is sewer, water, and road. It's unfortunately, you know, and it's a preliminary estimate, I can't, you know, hopefully it comes in less than what I estimate, but I can't guarantee that right now, because until we get all the survey, really dive into the design.
We're actually hoping, you'll see the next resolution after this is for another area, very similar to what we'll be doing, but just a different problem. We're hoping to spread these out over the next two years, probably.
Is there, is there no, able to find grants for that?
I am actively searching. So I know about, and I are in constant contact, looking for grants for any of this kind of, any of the stuff that we need to do in the city, so we're constantly looking for that service.
I guess, do you mean we need to reach out to our state?
That helps.
Love you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we can vote.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Alsmiri?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2025-35 approved.
Thank you. The next one is resolution 2025-36, approving award of the 2025 pipeline sewer, water, and road replacement engineering design.
Motion, second.
Mr. Mayor, again, John and Tiffany here to describe it in more detail, but much like the last resolution, we've identified significant problems in this area that need to be repaired, including collapsed sewers, I believe, and causing noxious smells in the area for that matter. So we're hoping to get this approved and designed and underway.
So as Max has mentioned, and DPS has been out there televising sewers, so we did find a, we, this road actually has, once it comes up, it has a sewer on, combined sewer on the north side and on the south side of the road, which isn't as common for us.
Yes, yes.
But, so then, both of them have been, we found that it's bowed, essentially causing low spots that's holding sewage, so until they get like a high velocity of sewage in there.
I only have the one that's on the.
Oh, yeah, it's the same one. It's just, I did four slides.
Oh, oh, I see.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I apologize. Yeah, if you go down. So as you can see here, there's the orange on the top and bottom, so one's underneath the sidewalk, the north one, the south one, seven feet north of the south curb line, and then we have water main going down the center of the road. So right now, road is flooding. We have holding, you know, standing bowed sewers, so low spots in both sewers that need to be replaced. So, go to the next one. Our proposed solution, our recommendation, is to replace both of these sewers with one sewer down the center. Redoing, you know, regrading the road, getting good drainage, adequate amount of catch basins in there, and then putting that water main on the north side of the road underneath the sidewalk. So right now, the big unknown for me right now is the connection, just with those two sewers. You do have two sewers going up and down Conan. I believe there's one that we can tie into, though. So this one, I think the cost was a hundred and fifty thousand for engineering services. The total estimated cost of this project right now is two point five million.
And, and mayor, the good part about these is, is they'll be basically shovel-ready at that point, so if we find grants for them, we basically can just say, okay, this is what we want the grant for. So it makes it really easy to shop around at that point.
So, Mr. Mayor, just a quick question. So two point five million for this individual, for this, or for combined both of them?
Each?
So what, the Trow Bridge is two million, and then two point five million for pipeline, so a combined total of four point five million.
I mean, in the past, it has been kind of easy to find grants for this sewer system and the, you know, lead pipe replacement, so hopefully it's gonna be.
I wouldn't say easy. There's been a lot of, there's been a lot of man hours behind scenes and that, and people, but I mean, constantly, we're gonna need mayor, council, to help us advocate to our state and federal partners for, for these upgrades, because we need help.
You guys did a good job on the events, though.
We do.
And both of these, both of these sites have probably a lot of our service calls, and we get a lot, we get more calls on both these two areas than any other area. Maybe the mayor has a speed dial.
He will.
All right, so we can vote.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Alsmiri?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2025-36 approved.
Thank you. We have another one coming. Resolution 2025-37, approving award, the city hall parking improvement to Merlot Construction Company.
Motion, second.
Okay, we've had a couple resolutions leading up to this, and this is finally the award to the actual contractor to get moving for behind City Hall. Tiffany, you have some more specifics?
So we designed and put up to bid the repaving and sewer replacement at City Hall. This also includes a fence with carports and I believe that alley that runs.
Both alleys.
Yeah.
Both, yeah.
We put this up to bid, opened bids on March 4th. We got eight bids. The first bid, low bid, withdrew their bid. The second one, we deemed not qualified, so we are on to the third low bid, which is Merlot Construction. That total cost is, so he came in at seven hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. So that's what we're recommending to go forward with. So we've done, we've positive reference checks on him. Hennessy has done work with him before, so it's a reputable contractor.
Don't forget, part of this is grant-funded as well.
Yeah.
In addition to that, we are doing the sewers in the back as well. As you know, the basement of City Hall has been notoriously a flooding issue for us, so we're working on stopping that, adding catch basins back there, the whole nine yards, to try and like fix a whole bunch of problems with this.
So the total project cost comes out to eight hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. That includes our design, construction admin, which is the next resolution, ten percent contingency. So Act fifty, or Act 51 will take care of six percent of the construction costs. The M.D.A. local agency grant, 24-5096, will take care of two hundred and sixty thousand with the remainder, four hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars for the project construction cost coming out of water and sewer fund. So anything not out of Act 51 or M.D.A. agency grant will be water and sewer funds.
Excuse me, ma'am?
Yes.
What is the design cost, please?
So the design cost on this one is thirty-two thousand, seventy-four dollars, and the construction administration cost is thirty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Okay. This is for one block?
So this is just.
Just only one block? Yep.
I'm sorry.
Both directions. It's going north and south. No, no, it's also going east and west. It's taking care of the alley connecting basically the back of City Hall to Conan as
Stuck brother has done.
All right.
So this, this resolution's just to approve the recommendation of the contractor to approve that.
So how much will the city pay from the general fund?
So it's not out of the general fund, it's out of the water and sewer fund, so that.
Well, I mean, the water.
Yeah, so that total for this project is five hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Gosh.
That's, yeah, so right now, you're, again, I kind of got, I got two resolutions stacked on top of each other, so, but yes, that's how.
So that means five million dollars.
No, not five, five hundred.
I'm saying the entire project that we're trying to fix, both on, on Paddle Line, I mean, Paddle Line, Trow Bridge, and now this alley, that means, what costs us estimated almost, almost five million dollars there.
Yes.
I'll, I'll set it down. We're also spreading that out over the years.
You forget, one more is coming. You didn't have.
Well, that, that cost is included in what I'm telling you.
Oh, that's my idea?
Yes, sir, that's, so that's already included.
All right.
So you got it, Mr. Mayor, get those man.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Alsmiri?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Fai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 202537 approved.
Thank you. The other one and the last one is related to that. Resolution 2025, totally approving award of the city, of the City Hall parking sewer alley improvement, engineering design, and construction management service to Hennessy Engineers.
Motion?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, as you had stated, this is just the companion resolution of the one prior.
All right, let's vote on it, please.
Councilman El Samiri?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Fai?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 202538.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, with that, we come to the end of the new business, and we move to the mayor report, to the reports. I'll start with my report. I actually don't have much to say. I just wanna say, khawatun barakah to everyone, and Eid mubarak in advance. This is our last meeting before Eid. I hope that everybody is enjoying Ramadan and the last 10 days, free parking during Ramadan, last 10 days and Eid holiday. I just wanna thank everyone who attended tonight, and hopefully, we'll see you soon. I just wanna mention that I received an invitation to the White House like two hours ago, an email. And then, I asked my colleagues if they received one, they didn't, so I texted those people back to ask them, why didn't they invite you? So, and the Eftar is Thursday, which is in two days. So, I'm waiting for their response, because last time when we got invited, the whole city council was invited. So, I questioned, why didn't you guys get invited? Because I heard that some community members got invited too, through other people, not through me or anyone. But I'm waiting for the response. Hopefully, they will confirm, and we will make sure this time we will go at our own expense, so people don't panic. You know, and hopefully, let's, let's just wait for the response from the people who sent me the email, and I hope that they confirm your invitation as well, the whole city council. With that, I just wanna touch base on a couple of comments. The person who mentioned the call to prayer, turns out that it's allowed for any religion. You know, it doesn't have to be the Adan only for the Muslims. Anyone can call, you know, to prayer in any method they want. It's allowed in Hamtramck, and we respect our diversity, and we value our coexistence in the city. The other one, you mentioned about, you know, Middle Eastern countries and how they don't tolerate each other. That's not our responsibility. We are here Americans, we migrated from there. We know that there are some issues, and we always advocate for democracy and peace and coexistence. But I just wanna mention, there were some dictatorship regimes in there that had top officials who are Christians. So, we can't generalize. You know, Iraq, the vice president used to be Christian. His name used to be Tarek Aziz, everybody knows, he was Christian, Caliban. In Syria too, they had a major rule. In Daranat, the president now is Christian, right? He's a Christian. So, so, we can't generalize and say, oh, all the Middle Eastern. Just some countries that are, they don't have other minorities, I mean, we can't blame them. And including, I don't know, I don't wanna name, but Muslim and non-Muslim countries in the Middle East. Bill Meyer mentioned the BDS movement resolution, that I'm being attacked now for, as, you know, some people are trying to block me from being the ambassador using those. Remember, it was Jewish activists who came here to ask us to, you know, take that resolution. It was a Jewish lawyer who drafted that. So, there is no way that you can call this anti-Semitism. The whole council unanimously voted for it. 2022, this is one of a few cities in the United States who passed a proclamation to condemn anti-Semitism. So, we are very proud of that. That's where we stand, and that's what our official stands for. So, you can't believe the media, especially those yellow media, you know? And they have political goals from publishing these things at this time. But this is where we stand in Hamtramck. We are very proud of our, of what we do, and we value every religion, and we value our diversity in the city and our coexistence. So, with that, I think, come to my, to the end of my report. But before that, I wanna award one of our guests today, a proclamation here from the state of Michigan, from a state rep. They delivered it to me and told me to award it to her. Ms. Alia Hamka, who is a very, who is a very activist in the academia in Hamtramck. She's, I think, the principal of one of the schools. So, we thank you for everything you do. She was part of the police youth academy, police citizen academy. And that's where we met her for the first time. I told her that she looks familiar, she's very active in Hamtramck. We appreciate everything you do for our students and for our community. And I would like to, on behalf of the state rep and everyone, very elected official of the state rep, and Senate who awarded this. So, we're taking picture? I can come out and hand it to you.
Thank you.
Have you been spotted in Hamtramck School or?
Uh, yeah, Taubeta, on Henley Street.
Unfortunately, she's my cousin.
We're from the same village. Rana is too. I'm taking you with me.
Rana, get inside the picture.
Rana is from my village too, I'll come take a picture. That's Ahmed, Ahmed.
Another community girl.
Other white boy, right? Good.
Hold on, I gotta take a picture.
I'm from the same village too.
Say cheese, say cheese, go. Look, honey, yeah. That's the M McIlroy. You might just see on Facebook.
Her brother's.
All right, so with that, that's the conclusion of my report, and we move to the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanna thank everybody for coming here today, tonight. Also, I don't think Isabel's still here, but, you know, I wanna congratulate her on receiving a certificate at the MML. She received her certificate, so she's not here today. And to add to what the mayor said to that person, that individual that stood up, you know, in Muslim countries, you have Muslims don't even receive citizenship. So, it's not only Christians. So, you have a lot of Muslims who live and work over there and still don't even get citizenship. So, I just wanna clear that, add to what you said, and, you know, Aymo Barak to everybody. It's gonna be happening Saturday or Sunday. Wish everybody all the best. Again, this free parking, as the mayor have said, you guys have a good night and be safe.
Thank you. City council report, anyone would like to say a few words?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Councilman Hassan.
First of all, the other day, I had the family death.
Sorry about that.
And I have, came from work with the stress, and before I come here, there's another attack with the Facebook about my kids, all those things together came. So, I, as a public servant, I should not speak. I apologize to Salim, Ludi, and his family. I, I also apologize to my residents.
Thank you.
And still, we are human. We don't have all those, the pressure come together, sometimes you cannot take it. Matter of fact, and the Salim father and me, good friend, and I go eat with him also. As soon as I see him, he's, you know, you don't have to come, because you are his uncle, and you have right to say something. I said, no, still, still. So, again, I apologize to my community, and Salim, Ludi, family, and his friends, all the kids. Second, Mr. Mayor, Bangladesh is the Muslim country. There is the, lots of Christian people from United States, dual citizen to Bangladesh, and they're running the hospital, helping the Bangladesh. So, there is the citizenship is there. So, the gentleman, he says, some of the Muslim country, they don't accept without Muslim to be the citizen. No, it's not true. And it is, it is, there is my back home, is a lots of Christian. And also, India, right now is talking, seven sister straight, and most of them Christian, rule the government, and they are the citizen. And they're from foreign country also. So, just one let you know. And the prayer, in the United States of America, we're not talking, anybody cannot pray. Everybody have right to pray, and they do, and no question. In that case, we as a Muslim, we are proud of American, because of, they let us pray and call for prayer for the Hamtramck, is the, is the Christian people help us to do it. So, we, we most diverse, and we help each other, and, and there is nothing with the religious issue. We are human, we are all going to the same direction. And also, some, sometime, every time people talking about me, the popularity. So, I just wanna mention, Abraham Lincoln Gettysburg speech, I don't know anybody completely read it or not. Government of the people, by the people, for the people. I elected by the people. And my most of the popularity and the people in the, in the whole Hamtramck, I believe I'm still tough in situation. If I call for any invite, you guys saw all those thing, 300 to 400 people show up like within hour. So, I'm doing anything against statement, I did not do nothing wrong. And I'm doing by the book, and I still gonna serve the people by the book. And still, I'm gonna speak if I see anything wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other number?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Hassan. You realize, you know, things happen, but you, you know, you think about it, you came back and all that, except, you know, apologize into the community, and Salim, Ludi, and I hope they all accept your apologies. You know, things happens always. As an American, I cannot ignore the hypocrisy of American, they're going on right now, we talk about human rights, we talk about the equality, but when Gaza people are fighting for their survival, and we, it's really difficult for us to celebrate it. But I still have to wish happy to all my community and Muslim families. And thank you for the audience being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Councilman Musa?
Good afternoon, everybody. To come in, you know, just this afternoon and this meeting. I'd like to remember today, tomorrow, Bangladesh is Independence Day, 54th Independence Day. 3 million people was killed, abused, and 2 million women was raped by the Pakistan army and soldiers. And remembering those people who passed their life, sacrificed their life for the, our independence in Bangladesh. And it is, they already started in Bangladesh, 13 hours, 11 hours behind the time, so it is Independence Day in Bangladesh. And people are here in the road, on Rabban Karim, and we are celebrating our Eid al-Fitr, hopefully, Sunday or Monday. So, people enjoying our, our free parking, just a company, people Hamtramck and business people. And still, three councilmen, we are in the parking committee, city manager and attorneys, we are trying to work hard to solve this year issue. I hope it will be properly solved by the term ending. Wish you good luck and happy Eid mubarak.
Thank you. Any more reports? Yes. Councilman Samiri, go ahead.
Thank you for everyone, we came today for this meeting. Rabban khawatun barakah for Ramadan, Eid mubarak. I got some question for the income tax. The income tax, when I find out a lot of city, they have a system. Only Hamtramck, they don't have a system. The system, they gonna save a lot for the people. When they collect the money, when they play income tax, they're gonna save a lot of people, the working employees. We, please, we need to move the new system, same other people, same other city. Even Detroit, even the state, even the federal, they have a system. Everyone, when they play income tax, they go right away, the money right away. They don't have anything some fallacy. Hamtramck, they, if, if you don't, if you don't tack to do it, they're gonna stay hungry. We find, they're gonna, they're like, if they have 10 people in place, if we move the new system, same other city, it's still only one in place. We need to move this issue fast. And we go to the last thing, I am happy to make a certificate for eviction, and thus, we have some credit. I wish this project, they came today for this, a system, the sewer and Trolbridge and Avaline, they're gonna save money for the people when they bait the flood. We need to do that one maybe every year, even we gonna fight to play the grant. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Samiri, and congratulations on your certificate from the MML. Don't forget that. And I think the city manager probably got to your point, and he's gonna coordinate with you on the income tax issue. Any other reports, Mr. Mayor? Councilman Samiri?
Thanks for coming, good night, Rabban Karim, and excellent work to all. As you all know, that we have been free parking for next 10 days, so please, use it, and please enjoy reading the testimony. Good night.
Thank you, and with that, we come to.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman.
May I speak something I forgot?
Go ahead.
So, Michigan Municipal League, congratulations to the Al-Samiri and Councilman Abu Musa also have level one. Or, I have a level two. So, the thing is, while I get nearly elected, I was ignoring that, ignoring that. I think I know better than anybody else why I go there. So, the state manager came, they mandatory force us to attend the, the MML conference. So, then I have to go, me and Gajali and we all have to go, because no choice. As soon as I go there, the door is completely in my brain, open, no. What I know, there is some more is here, I can learn. So, and start from that day, I did not miss the mass conference turning. So, I wanna, all the elected official requesting, if you guys have a time, go there, and city provide all those things, and something you can learn, and something even can have a relationship with other cities managers, and, and then, like a lobbying, you have a state rep there, senator come, and all the opportunities there. That's all. I'm really very grateful, when I've been going there. I learn every day something from there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, we come to the end of the reports, and we move to the second round of public comments, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna read the email, public comment first. This is from Ahmed Shadaf, who is present, but I'm going to read his public comment that he emailed me. Dear Chief El Tahiri, members of the Hamtramck City Council and City Manager Gary Barino, I'm writing to formally express my concern regarding a discriminatory and inappropriate comma made during my recent interview for the Hamtramck Police Reserve Program. On March 8th, 2025, I was interviewed by Lieutenant Melanie Babish-Riska at the Hamtramck Police Department. During the interview, I was asked, how are you doing? I responded that I was doing well, but mentioned that I was fasting due to Ramadan. Lieutenant Riska then stated, why does everybody come here, making it such a big deal? She further commented, everyone fast, not just Muslims. I found these remarks to be highly inappropriate, dismissive of my religious beliefs, and unprofessional in a formal interview setting. These comments suggested an implicit bias against my faith and created an uncomfortable atmosphere, making me feel singled out because of my religious observance. According to Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, is unlawful to discriminate against an individual based on religion during the hiring process. Asking why I mention Ramadan in response to a general well-being question is relevant to this job and could be perceived as discriminatory. I respectfully request that this matter be investigated promptly, and that appropriate measures be taken to ensure religious sensitivity and diversity training are provided to all personnel involved in the hiring process. Additionally, I request a written response outlining the steps that I will, that will be taken to address this issue. I appreciate your time and attention to this matter, and look forward to your attention. Sincerely, Ahmed Shadaf. Hassan Ulan, 2 minutes.
I'd like to ask you, man. So, good afternoon again, Hassan Ulan, from Dearborn. I just wanted to address a couple of things, Mr. Chair. When a person commits a crime, and they're investigated, and charges are brought against them, the only person that can remove him is the governor. The governor can remove him immediately from office. She can tell him he have to resign immediately. But technically, if you're committed, he committed a crime, and you're going through a legal process, it's very hard if they have solid evidence, especially if they have a person on video and a witness to go to trial, and the trial, jury trial, and beat it. So, instead of you getting humiliated, I am asking for you to resign immediately at this time because of the fact that everybody knows what you did, okay? This has been happening for a long time, you probably got caught up, it happens everywhere. And when you get caught up with a crime, you have to face the consequences. I'm gonna give you a little story. I was convicted of a crime about 20 years ago. Mr. Chair? Hold on, I'm not talking about you.
He's talking about, that's all right.
Okay? So, I tried to apply for a position, and the same thing happened to me, they told me, I can't run, because you've been convicted of a felony. Come to find out, it says, if you were elected position, state or federal. Come to find out, it says if you were elected position, state or federal, that's the problem. See, you're running away from the, from the, what's it called, from the situation. It's not a big deal, you can run, but you can't hide. It's very simple. This gentleman has to understand, when you get convicted of a crime and you take a plea bargain or you're found guilty by a jury, you'll be removed immediately. Why the embarrassment? Just step down, let other people move. What does this job pay you guys? Unless there's something going on, I don't know. And I'm going to investigate to see what the problem is that you will not say, you know what? I'm going to get the video under the Freedom of Information and I'm going to post the video and give it to the news, the video that he was sending to put in ballots. That's what I'm going to get and I'm going to make it public if you guys don't resign.
Mr. Mayor, let's hope a public comment.
All right, thank you. I think with that, we come to the end and we move, need to move to adjourn.
A motion?
Second. Ballot favor?
Aye.
723, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.